Six thirty two, reminder this meeting is being digitally recorded, so as always, let's be respectful of each other in listening. And there's no one in the public right now. So, uh, will, anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, any announcements you'd like to make?
Yes, so Harvest Breakfast, uh, we just had that this past weekend. It was, um, it was a good event. Um, a lot of people came out. Um, our, the cash committee was not a little nervous, but sometimes, you know, after COVID, we don't know how this is gonna go, you know? Um, but a lot of people came out and came to breakfast. Um, so it was, it was very good throughout the, uh, few hours that we had breakfast. We, we did sell a lot of breakfast, so that's good. Um, overall, it was, it was, um, say, well attended. It's not as well as we have had in the past, but I'm very optimistic with indoor things like that, cause everyone's still a little sketchy. Uh, but other than that, um, it was a good day for, for fundraising for the Harvest Breakfast. Um, coming up, we have a few things at the library, stories for Halloween at the library. There's two different, one's on October twenty second. Um, from five to six is, uh, one more for eight to twelve year olds. And then from six to seven is thirteen plus, so it's a little bit more scary stories. Uh, but that's free to the public. And again, that's October twenty second. We have our special town meeting, just in case you haven't heard, on October twenty sixth at seven PM in the gym at the school. Uh, the haunted hayride is Friday, uh, October twenty eighth and twenty ninth from five thirty to nine thirty at Rieta Ranch. Um, I'm not sure if they're still looking for skits, but most likely they'll accept some if anyone's interested. Um, they usually never turn anyone away. Uh, so yeah, so contact, there's, there's a hauntedhayride.com, I believe. Uh, there you go. Thank you, Chris, uh, for that. If you are interested in doing a skit at the haunted hayride.
What were the hours again, five thirty?
Five thirty to nine thirty is what most of the signs say. So I'm going with those hours. Um, Hal- and that's usually roughly the, the hours. Uh, there's a children's Halloween parade on October thirtieth, which is Sunday at one PM, meet at the fire station, bring a bag of candy for donations. The, the kids all march down Main Street and then come to the school where they have, um, a little refreshment. And then there's a magician, um, uh, that does a, does a show for all the kids. And it's, it's a fun little day with the kids. They all dress up in their Halloween costumes. And they're always looking for people to line Main Street to wave on the kids. So if you don't have a child, feel free. It only, the parade only takes like twenty minutes, but they, the kids like seeing people waving at them. So, um, come on down and watch that again. That's Sunday, August thirtieth at one PM.
August thirtieth?
Uh, excuse me, October thirtieth. I wish we were still in August, that'd be nice, summertime. So yes, October thirtieth. And then we have, of course, the next day is Halloween. There's a Halloween, we're calling it a block party now, so we don't get booted off Facebook. Um, so instead of hoedown, it's now block party. From forty in the, in the parking lot, um, Bill Shea sponsors that, and the police department put on a nice fun thing with DJs, and there's candy and stuff like that.
Parking lot here?
Yes, right out front. Um, and then trick or treating is five to eight. Most people usually kinda come down to the center, Main Street and High Street area, but I know there is trick or treating other places in the area. But there, the bulk of the people come down to Main Street. So there's, there's lots of people, lots of candies, crossing guards, the whole nine yards, so.
Five to eight, right?
Yes, five to eight for trick or treat. And that's October. And then, of course, if you're really interested, we got light fight coming up. So everyone start gearing up to put up your holiday displays. All right, and that's all I got for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Sandy, I'm assuming on the consent agenda, since there are no specific minutes, we don't have any?
No, we'll be approving executive session minutes in the executive session.
Yeah, so that's not part of, okay.
Yeah, no minutes.
It's okay, if you give me a motion to.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda waiving, um, the, the waiting period for the, uh, wage authorizations.
For the appointments?
Yes, for the appointments for Joyce and, or Kristen and James.
And, okay. Uh, there any questions on either of these before you, is there a second on the motion, first of all?
Second.
Okay. Any, uh, holds for any reason on either the wage authorizations or the resignations? Cause we should all be aware of that anyway. Okay. Sandy, what?
Um, yeah, I want Assistant Town Clerk, Town Clerk in custodium.
Yeah.
So, who is Kristen Foster?
She's the new clerk. She came out and board, mm, earlier.
Really good, yeah, we can help.
And Joyce is working with her to help break her in, get her through the elections and the, uh, special meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay? Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Now we move to new business, and first thing is the ARPA.
All right, so I did hand out now, right before we started, just the spreadsheet I had. I noticed the agenda originally had some different numbers on it, so I wanted to make sure we're on the same page. So if it's okay, I'm gonna actually just read from the spreadsheet, um, to go through those numbers. So this time, when we were in ARPA for the second round, we had talked a lot about how we were going to move forward with scoring, um, and looking at the different applications. And if you remember, in the first round, we did a matrix, we published the matrix. People, she is copy. Um, people had the ability to submit their projects and also know what we were scoring on. This time, we did it a little bit different. We had asked each member of the ARPA committee to, um, take all the projects, go home and essentially take out a checkbook with the amount of money we had to spend, and figure out whether they wanted to full, fully fund, partially fund, or not fund a project, and come up with the total amount. So everyone kinda prioritized their own pieces of what they thought were the most important projects to pursue. Um, we came to the table, we started discussing them. Interestingly enough, I don't think we had a full consensus on a single item of a hundred percent funding, zero percent funding, or partial funding. We had a lot of times, there was three or four who had an opinion on something that was on the same page, and someone else was not. So we worked through this. I can't even tell you how many meetings we had at this point to go over that. We actually had one meeting. I was really frustrated because we made zero progress that night, where we, we had lots of discussions, but we didn't make any more changes. So overall, of course, of quite a few meetings, we were able to get this down to what we had initially left, which was the four twenty eight, seven forty six, um, for expending. And with those funds, um, we talked about the different projects. Some applicants, which included businesses, submitted multiple projects. They submitted one for lost revenue and one for capital. And we went through the lost revenue, although there was a lot of debate and different opinions as to how we would really calculate this. The consensus of the group was that, um, because they had been asked, folks had been asked to submit their financial statements for a period of years, including, you know, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty one, and the first half of twenty two, to see if, you know, there was actually a demonstrated loss in the revenues. So there is some disagreement about whether or not, you know, someone who may not, um, still be in business or changed their business, whether that was considered a loss or not. There was a little debate on whether or not if someone went a different direction on their business to be able to continue making money, whether or not a loss could actually be calculated and visible. So at the end of the day, this is what we have come up with. Um, of all the projects submitted, and I know Sandy and I had talked since this, um, apparently there were two more submitted by the police department, but they never made it to our packets. Um, Tony had made all hard copies, all the things were electronic, but for whatever reason, we never got those. And the first I saw them was about a month ago, when Sandy sent them over and said, do you have a status on this? And I said, I've never seen these. So do keep that in mind, that if that's something anyone was interested in entertaining, it's not something ARPA entertained, um, just because it didn't come to us and we didn't have them. So based on everything here, um, like I said, you will see that there's, some businesses have two applications. Um, of everything that was submitted, there are two, well, a couple applicants that we chose not to fund at all. Um, or the consensus was not to fund. So I wanna talk about those real quick first, just so everyone's on the same page. So the first one was Heart and Heart Consignment. So this was a place, um, they originally were the yoga studio before, uh, COVID hit. And they actually ended up going out of business, cause they couldn't get people to come back to in-person fitness, um, and they struggled and so forth. Uh, so there were two requests from the owner of this business. One request was for lost revenue in the amount of fifteen thousand. And the other was the request for a mini split, to be able to continue moving forward with the current business. Um, and looking at the revenues with the measures that I just mentioned previously, having, being able to show an actual loss, um, it was the consensus of the committee that a loss was not able to be demonstrated, because there weren't enough financials, and ultimately, the business had closed. So there was no loss that continued on from that point. Um, and ultimately, the decision was not to fund either of those projects. The other projects that we did not fund, uh, one of them was the Parks Commission. They had requested the replacement of a well pump. After allotted discussion, even conversations with the chair who was on our committee of the FinCom, Susan, um, it was thought that this was better suited to have a application come from the Parks Commission over to the FinCom from the reserve fund, right? It's an unanticipated emergency expenditure. No one knew it was gonna happen. Um, and something that should be funded from that, not this one-time pot of money of ARPA. Cause that's where it would normally come from. So those are the major two. Aside from that, there is, um, the other ones we did not fund. Jacamo's Gourmet Foods had submitted two applications. One was for capital, one was for lost revenue. Um, they were fortunate during the pandemic, and while they lost their normal sources of revenue, they were able to take advantage of the granola market and actually make, um, make their money, even if not better, through that market. And the ARPA's consensus was that we could not see a lost revenue demonstrated. Um, the other one was the Town Administrator Town Center. We talked about that previously, I think, in this meeting. About that one, so that was the twenty thousand. That was for, um, the difference, uh, the engineering corp.
To oversee the project.
To oversee the project, yes. And we had talked a lot about how that was, you know, wider town project, something that, you know, we should be budgeting from on this end, and something that we've already gone back to the people a couple times on. And that we should really go back to the people again to get the opinions, and rather, not so much the opinions, but making sure that the public was aware of what was happening on that one. Um, and then Plainview Farm, they had put in two applications. One was for lost revenue and one was for capital. Again, just similar to Jacamo's, it was harder for the ARPA committee to have cons- meet consensus on having a lost revenue for that company. So those are the applications that we did not fund. So the ones that we did fund, to summarize for folks, so everyone's on the same page, and then, you know, whatever questions there may be, I'm happy, um, between myself and KP to see what we can do for answering them. In order of this spreadsheet, and for those at home, the first one was Jacamo's Gourmet Foods LLC Kitchen Upgrades, a caper project which we, um, they had requested, and we suggested funding at that amount of fifteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. A Parks Commission project for the Curtis Field Walking Track, they had requested fifty thousand, and we had recommended funding at sixteen thousand, one hundred. Uh, Council on Aging New Outdoor Space Deck Capital, they requested sixty thousand. We recommended funding at fifty-one thousand, five hundred. Fire Department for a new ambulance for capital, two hundred and fifty thousand was requested, and we recommended funding at that amount. Cemetery Commission had requested funding for securing cemetery, enhancing the beauty with fencing, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. We recommended funding at eight thousand, five hundred. Town Administrator Scanning Town Documents and Completion of a Current Project They Had Started, in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred, eleven dollars and five cents. We recommended funding in that amount. Here for You Lost Revenue, they, she requested thirty-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the recommended funding was thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents. Um.
Now she'd already been given money in the first.
Yes, but I'm happy to answer that when, as soon as I finish my list, Jeff.
Okay, all right, yep.
Like, I'm sure there's more questions. Um, Open Space Committee Trail Improvements Capital, sixty thousand was requested. We suggested funding at sixteen thousand, one hundred. Plainview Farm Gift Shop Enhancement Capital, requested funding thirty thousand, recommended twenty-six thousand, four fifty. Um, and that is the list right there. So I can, I can start there if you want, Jeff, or wherever you'd like to start on the list.
I didn't mean to, yeah. I know, I was just curious, she was, so how, what, how do you explain the, the double aspect of it, yeah?
Yes. Yes. It's a good question. So Here for You appeared in round one, um, and they requested funds. They didn't have a very clear direction of what they were looking for, what amount or so forth. And ultimately, the committee did fund, um, Here for You, round one. I do not remember the amount. I wanna say it's about eighteen thousand.
It was right around seventeen or something, seventeen, yeah.
Right where we were. Um, the second time she came back, she had some, um, documents, including her revenues over the past couple of years and losses. And she had requested thirty-four thousand, twenty-eight for additional money, plus that original funding to get her up to the total loss. And the consensus of the committee, um, remember, none of these decisions were really unanimous, but the consensus of the committee was that it should be funded, and ultimately, the recommended amount was thirty-one thousand, four forty-five, oh eight.
Okay. Uh, and one other question from me, and then I'll just let anybody else jump in. Cause it, on the, uh, Town Administrative Project that you said you did not fund, we already took ten thousand from that.
Did we take that from?
ARPA.
ARPA?
Yeah, it was a fifty fifty from, uh, Susan's, right, reserve.
Okay. But that was, that was after this recommendation and before we've had this discussion.
Yes, correct.
Right.
Yeah, so my question is, it's not in the amount, so, uh, we're.
We gotta find ten grand.
So ultimately, at the end of the day, yes. So we're currently gonna be, um, so, topic is, say, four eighteen, seven forty-six.
So this, the thought, the thought. The thought of the committee was to present the, we don't have to find anything if all these projects aren't approved, right? We may find ourselves some cash, you know, organically. But if all these projects are approved, at the, um, you know, amounts that Heather just spoke about, then we gotta find ten thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Which is what we have to deal with.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we reduce?
Excuse me, Peter. Are you folks here for our meeting, or are the finance committee meeting?
Is this a selectman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can you both sign in, please?
Sure.
Go ahead, Peter.
So, can we reduce these amounts?
These are ARPA's recommendations as a committee to the select board. The select board is the ultimate.
Okay.
Decision maker in this. So we can add these amounts, we can subtract these amounts, we can put things that don't exist on this. We can take everything off and start over. We can do whatever is the will of this board.
I have a recommendation, and this is me.
Well, I have, I have a question before you make a recommendation that has to do with the dollar amounts that were.
Previously recommended.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Because of, and the only reason why I ask this is just so everybody knows, the Parks Commission and the Open Space were dropped down because the thought was to go after grant money. Does anybody know the status on if they have received any grant money, if the grants were actually applied for, and where we're at with that whole hot mess?
So the ADA grants, I did in the backseat of the car, um, at the Air Force Museum, four hours on, on Friday. It was due on September thirtieth.
Okay.
And Sandy should have received confirmation that it was sent.
Okay.
So she has that. So the ADA grant was submitted, uh, we did submit it for the trail, is what we put it in for, um, the Open Space Trail.
Yes.
So that money was in. Um, and I submitted it having these sixteen one as the offset, so for the balance, forty-something thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, the second one, I don't thi- I think we talked about potentially as a grant, but we also talked about there being funds available, um, in community preservation.
Okay, so that hasn't been applied for yet, cause that's not.
As far as I know, it has not. But I think everyone was waiting to see how things go before this board, before, you know, see if there's even any money on the table or no money on the table before they got excited.
Do we know the status of the grant that was, no, do we have a date?
We, November, November, December. We're not gonna hear soon.
It's gonna be not gonna be November, uh, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Peter, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that first.
No, that's fine. Um, all right, two, I actually got a couple of questions. On, on the Fire Chief's request, Town Admin of two fifty for the ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
If that got lowered by ten thousand, where would the rest come from? Is that a cap- in the capital plan, this, this ambulance purchase?
It's not currently, no.
Not currently. So what, and what's the total amount for that ambulance?
They would have to come from.
That amount, two fifty.
I believe it was.
That's the full amount for that?
No, that's not the full.
No, it's like four hundred and something thousand, I thought.
Hold on, I have all the applications.
Right now, I think the ambulances, cause I just had this conversation the other day in another town. I think the ambulances are going around three hundred, three fifty, depending on how equipped they are.
Yeah.
So this alone at two fifty with current inflation wouldn't cover the cost of the ambulance.
It's, it's almost like a bare bones. Like, is, is the ambulance and chassis, now you outfit it, right?
But if I remember correctly, the application wasn't submitted for the total amount of the ambulance. I think this was.
Correct.
We have a higher number for the total amount of the ambulance, and it's being funded by something in addition
I'm asking Sandy if she has.
to the ARPA amount we seek.
She's looking for it.
I think it was free cash on the, we can pull up the application.
Yep.
She's, she's looking for it.
Um, Ryan's application is what I'm working at, um.
Which one?
So it, he said something about. Offsetting a fire truck, um, that is on the capital plan. See, attached proposal, here we go.
Why don't I just look at it?
Three seventy-five.
For the ambulance?
Is the ambulance.
So that would be offset with free cash by one twenty-five.
Okay. All right, so here, here's my recommendation. We reduce each one of these, spread it, instead of taking ten thousand from one or two thousand from this one, I say, I say, spread it out over the nine, and we'll reduce them all by one hundred, one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents. Each one of them. And that comes out to, that's if they're all approved. And that comes out to ten thousand dollars, point zero eight cents. I can't get rid of the zero eight somewhere, so I'm not in account. So that's, that's my personal recommendation. Rather than hurt one over the other, hit them all equally for the same amount. One thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, point twelve cents.
Any, any.
If they're all approved. And that takes care of your ten thousand that we're looking to pay for that engineering.
Yeah, there are.
The thing is, there's gonna be other money, and it has to be used out of our budget and such, um.
Chris, I'm defer to you since you are on the committee.
Correct. That's, but that's.
What, what do you mean by that, Sandy? I don't understand.
Ten and ten.
Well, the, like, the scanning documents, that's a contracted price of thirteen thousand, six eleven oh five. So if we don't apply thirteen, six eleven oh five to that, then it has to come out of.
Somewhere.
A thousand dollars.
Out of the budget, somewhere, um.
I guess my thought would be just, you know, it's, the two fifty is the largest item there. If we're already asking for one twenty-five from free cash, one thirty-five doesn't change it.
What's another ten?
The other option is to look at some of these projects and see if they're things that we really need. Um, I know, you know, one of the focuses we had talked about in this meeting a number of times in the first round of ARPA, as well as the second round of ARPA, is making sure that we're taking care of the businesses. Those who apply, we wanna make sure that we are, um, acknowledging their requests, and we're assisting them wherever we can in getting the money back out to them. Um, so I think, you know, in that thought, it's really important to look at those numbers. That being said, to Jeff's, um, question earlier, we do have one applicant who already did get funding the first round. Now, whether or not they asked for the right amount the first round or not, they were encouraged to apply the second round. Um, but I know there was not complete consi- you know, the majority was to fund it, but there was also discussion about whether we fund that at all, um, because that person did get funding the first round. And whether it made sense to not fund that. So, I mean, that's always an option too. So the funding there is thirty-one thousand, four forty-five. If we were to fund that, I have no qualms about reducing that to twenty-one thousand, four forty-five, oh eight. So to still provide funding, but provide it the lower amount, in understanding that we did provide funding the first round. Where everyone else on here for businesses, that this is the first bite at the apple.
Yeah, so if it were twenty-one, she'd already gotten the seventeen or eighteen, right? So it's, what's, she got around thirty-nine, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that's lost revenue?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'm gonna look at this at a totally different point of view.
Okay.
All right, um, cause I actually watched you guys' meetings, and I do agree that most of you were having a hard time all getting on the same page. Um, but the one that was last is also the one that affects the least amount of people, because it's the cemeteries.
Mm-hmm.
It's putting fencing around the cemetery, which is not going to affect, other than aesthetics, a business. It's not going to enhance the senior center or a town entity. It's, you know what I mean? I just, where you guys, that was the last one you guys put on. And you, a few of you said no outright to put it forward. And that's almost the full amount, and we're not hurting anyone that's living. I, I, I don't know how, it's a cemetery, it's a fence. Like, a business or this, or the, the, the Council on Aging, or, you know what I mean? These are all, like, people that are alive, that are here, that are tangible, that need things, like an ambulance, or to keep their business going, or to put an outdoor deck, or for an ambulance, or whatever. These are all living human people.
Question. Um, what, is this one certain cemetery, or is that all of them? Is it the main one?
So.
I think they put, no, no, they.
Or is it the one up the street?
So.
That's not even that ugly-ass one, no. They're gonna take that down.
Which one, or they're all, they're all ugly.
So there was.
Well, no, that one's bad.
They're all ugly.
So there's a request for, there was a request for all four cemeteries. So Evergreen, Rural Glen and Brookside was one set. Forest Glen, Route sixty-eight and Route sixty-two. Um, the Evergreen, Rural Glen and Brookside was sixty-five thousand, so that wouldn't cover it.
Yeah.
The Forest Glen was fourteen thousand, seven eight.
Okay.
Um, Route sixty-eight was two thousand, and Route sixty-two Cemetery was a total of, it looks like six thousand, three seventy. So that's where that eight thousand and five came from. So those two would be the only ones within the, the piece.
Yeah, the low, the small ones. So, that's, yeah.
But to Katie, Katie's point, that was, you know, definitely the most contentious. That's one we circled back on, just because when we had first put it in our checkbooks, everyone literally had a different amount for it, from zero to fully funding it, to three other different variations of in-between numbers.
When you were discussing the cemeteries, did, as part of the discussion, did anything come up in, in terms of, I'm thinking back now, maybe five, six, seven years. At one point, it was something we wanted to do to consolidate, because each summit, semi- cemeteries, many of them have their own funding.
Mm-hmm.
And when we were talking about it as a board, then it's coming back to me now, we couldn't do it because of that. Each of them had their own funding. Consequently, you couldn't use one, uh, putting it into a, like, you know, a pot for everybody else. And I was wondering if any of that came up. Is that why it was funded?
They're all individual, no.
That, that we would be funding this as opposed to the cemetery itself, using the money for its own security? Depending upon which cemetery you're talking about.
So I sat in the meeting where this proposal was actually, because I'm the liaison for the Cemetery Commission.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, and I try to sit at my meetings as best as possible, just to hear what's going on. Um, so the proposal, um, came about, um, Ed proposed it, Lanchard, to the Cemetery Commission. Um, and it was, that was brought up, uh, Paul Sweeney said, there's a different, uh, doll, there's a different, uh, line item for each one, and it's because that's the way it was set up, and you can't consolidate them, so they have to be separate.
Right.
Um, but the whole thing was, I guess, years back, Ed and somebody else, I believe, tried to apply for, um, CP, uh, CPA money, CPC, uh, funds for it, but it failed because most of them aren't historic, the ones that they were trying to do. So there are a couple, or at least one that is historic that they're going to try to do, and that's the one that has that, the creepy old one up off New Templeton, that's like, got that beautiful wrought iron, but it is rather creepy up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, they're gonna try, I guess, to do that one through funding that way, because it is historical. The rest of them, I'm not sure what they're going to do. The plan was that they were going to solely go through and do them themselves with the signs, so that way they all match.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, yeah, and then the one down here, they're gonna take down and leave it open for a little while to see if that looks better. They were, it was already supposed to be done, but I think the weather just kind of got away from them for a little while there. So these two were the ones, I believe, one was on up off, they were, they're the outskirts ones. They're not the big ones that everybody sees, so I, yeah. Again, it's the low hanging fruit, it's almost the full dollar amount, and it doesn't hurt anyone that's, not that relatives don't go there and people don't drive by, but it's not even the ones that you drive by the most, the ones that the people are complaining about the most, that this would affect either. So that's why I put it that way. We'd still have to find the other one thousand, five hundred, but that's a lot easier to find than the full ten grand.
So we've got basically two proposals here.
Might I suggest that the fire truck and the.
that the fire truck and the microfiche project, to Sandy's point, we'd have to find funding somewhere in the budget, the town budget, to make up the shortfalls that they don't get from ARPA. So I would suggest we leave those two alone.
In which two? There's.
One and two. The fire truck.
Oh. Oh, in the scission, okay, alright.
The ambulance, I'm sorry, fire department, the ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
And the microfiche project. And then I would suggest we reduce every other award recommended by the ARPA committee similar um to what was already proposed, but on a prorated basis per percentage of the total amount they are requesting. When the number falls, it's already fall to four eighteen seven forty-six. We do some back of the, back of the paper math here, and we can find out which of those projects owns what percentage of that amount, and then reduce it by that percentage.
I like the, I'm, I applaud that creative thinking gave you, but I think in addition to, you know, not just those projects, but for instance, you know, where we just applied for the ADA grant, we said we had sixteen thousand one hundred match. So now we're getting into dicey things, and I think we might be getting into pieces on other ones where we've already reduced, like the COA,
Yeah.
they really need the sixty, we've already reduced it to the fifty-one five, like I, I think we're getting too dicey with the, some of those. I think, you know, um we look at some of the other suggestions on the table, whether it be, you know, that eight-five for cemetery, cause it's only those two cemeteries, and just like we did with our budget, there was something that didn't impact people directly at the first mega cut.
Mm-hmm.
The other option is, you know, we did already give money in the first round to Here for You, so theoretically, they'd still get money, they would just get ten thousand dollars less.
Mm-hmm.
Um which is still, I think, one, I think it's the second most we've given to any business, the first being um the pallet factory. Go green.
Go green.
Um.
I'm okay, I'm okay with funding something one hundred percent if there's a.
Reason why?
Relevant and, you know, critical reason why. If you're saying we've applied for a grant and we already pledged sixteen one,
Mm-hmm.
okay, then let's leave that sixteen one alone again.
But what if there's more we don't know about, right? Like, I think.
I don't know, if we don't know about them, we can't, we can't consider that.
If I could jump in for a minute, um to try to make sense out of all of this, going to Katie's suggestion, Sandy, where 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 would we get the extra fifteen hundred?
If you took.
If we took, if we did the cemetery, if we did Katie's suggestion, most likely, where would it come from?
The cemetery?
You mean off this list?
I would.
No, I, no, that's why I'm asking. If 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 we did your suggestion, and that would be the only one we touch.
Okay.
From this list, where would we get the other fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
I mean, could we find it in our budget?
We'd have to, yeah, it'd have to come from the budget somehow.
Or free cash, I mean, you could, you could reduce the the ambulance by fifteen hundred and you you haven't hurt anybody. Or anything, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
True, that's, that's not gonna, yeah, it's not gonna make a huge difference.
No, fifteen hundred, I mean, you could do that in one of these things.
You do it to the laser fiche, and that's actually gonna be impactful, cause they're already dealing with pennies and you can't take way more pennies, or they have less pennies and they don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So would be with, I want you to mention that, and doing those two, would that be the less
You could, you could.
The lesser of the three.
I mean, you could take the eighty-five hundred off and zero that out, and then nothing to cemetery, and then you could take the last fifteen hundred from the tw- two hundred and fifty thousand, and what is that?
Mm-hmm.
Two, two forty-eight five?
Cause that is. Yeah.
Yeah, and then the other fifteen hundred would have to come together. They're already hitting, they're already hitting free cash for a buck and a quarter, right?
Yeah.
And not to, and not to, and not to the others. Right, and.
So what's it on?
No, 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 that would be the total, that would be it, if you took, if you took.
No, we wouldn't touch it.
Oh, that took two fifty?
Yeah.
That would do it.
That would be the ten.
That would be ten.
Oh, okay.
The other thing, just to put it on the table, cause you guys make all the decisions.
Which I like.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember what the police department's requests were, or how much they were, um.
I don't either.
Yeah, what were those?
Radios, right?
I've tried to find those.
Yeah, one of them was radios.
Which are very important, very important, and why did they not get submitted?
Yeah.
Um. I don't know.
So they never even made it to the committee?
No.
So, and.
Not until I got an email that said, hey, what happened to these, um.
And those are expenses to the radios.
Yeah, they're probably three grand, four radios.
We talked about it at the meeting up in Rockland.
We didn't, yes, and then, you know, I mean, that's a huge safety issue, if they need new body alarms on their, you know what I mean?
So. Yeah.
That's a lifeline when you're working out there alone on a midnight shift.
Yeah, so. Do we know what the, do you, Heather, do you know what the two were and the dollar amounts?
I'm gonna try to find it, Sandy, is that possible? You could pull it in your email quickly, only because I know I tried the other day when I was asked about it, and I had a pick of the phone.
I don't.
Find something, yeah.
I don't know how I can do that when I got.
Zoom.
Zoom going on, yeah.
She's on Zoom, yeah.
You can, you can do it.
I can do it.
Yep, just pull up the, um, just pull up, cause you're not sharing your screen.
You can do it. You can do it.
So you're all set, see, we don't even see it, we see, you can.
I can pull up my email, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then you see me.
And while we're looking for something, gentlemen, were you, did you come here for like open session, and you just got here late, uh what is it you're here for?
You can pause your camera.
No, I'm, I'm guessing they're D two builders.
Yes, we are.
Other what?
D two builders, I recognize them from coming down the street.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna try to save your time for you, but, okay.
They're waiting, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Like, it's gotta be the only, it's the only thing on the list, and they look very familiar down the street, so.
Did I send it to you?
You did, you did from Ryan, so he would have sent Ryan, um, Kucher.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, should we consider moving to the next item while Sandy's looking that up so we can keep going?
Yeah, we can do that.
borrow some time.
All right, item B, uh basically, all we have to do is have a motion to approve the FY twenty-four budget planning calendar. So if if anyone would like to get the motion on the table, then if there's any discussion, we can have it.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-four budget calendar.
Planning calendar?
Planning calendar, excuse me.
Okay, motion ma- motion made second, um, any discussion in terms of, have you all had a chance to look at, see the calendar that that was in our folders?
Second.
I'm still.
Yep.
The re- for the rest of the year and everything?
Yep.
Looks good to me.
Okay. Any questions of discussion? Alright, then, uh seeing as none, we'll uh call it quits. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Stop me anytime you want, Sandy, okay?
No, you keep going.
Alright, we're to the, the first refusal, that's where we're at now, you, would you like to speak on that?
She can't, she can't.
My first refusal, sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, s- stop me when you want, cause.
So we have a property here located on map two, lots thirty-nine and forty-one on Ragged Hill Road, as all of the other rights of first refusal have come to us previously this year.
Yeah.
What happens is when there's a property that's in sixty-one A or sixty-one B, um they're required to give the town the opportunity to say, yes, we want this
Mm-hmm.
or no, we don't first.
And the recommend, the recommendation is to refuse.
Um. Yes, and as we've talked about before, is wonderful and great opportunity would be sometimes to look at specific properties and to have the opportunity to say, yes, we'd like to purchase this until we get to a point where we plan these things out in, well in advance and have the funds available readily
Mm-hmm.
at our fingertips to be able to purchase. It's just not something that's feasible for us with most of these properties.
Yeah, they look, they they did their checklist, which this is great, cause this is the first one they've done, so they actually went out onto the property and they walked it and they did their checklist, open space.
Open space did, and they didn't?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to see if it's, it's in the, it's in your folders, their findings and everything else on whether they actually rate it, they have a rating system and everything else.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
That was from the last time we had a um piece of property crop up, so now all the ones that we have the right of first refusal need to go to open space first to go through this checklist just to make sure, because it's not just the town itself, it could be um like North County Land Trust or something like that.
See, I didn't, I didn't see that one.
No, it's in, it's in your folder.
Yeah, it's there, it's there.
There you go.
Along with a plot.
Yeah, so their recommendation is to not pursue it.
But.
It's her.
Yep.
Yeah.
So much work.
Uh it's, it's not, it's been logged, um it's kinda beat up um due to the logging, the, what's there, and it doesn't like attach to
Yeah.
other things that would be helpful, so.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
The town would also have to come up with a hundred and fifty thousand to pay for it.
Yeah.
Well, either that or North County Land Trust or something like that, but yeah.
Yeah.
And they're on, they're already, are they are already under contract for that property? There's somebody interested, correct, already, but you gentlemen?
Correct.
That's why they're here.
Okay. And you guys are, again?
D two builders.
D two builders.
Okay, if, well, once we get a motion on the t- table, then if you would like to address and talk about it, you can. Mike, what, what?
Okay.
Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road, was that, uh, the open space committee, was that a public meeting? They had a recommendation, did, did the board?
No, they, they went out individually and it was like three of them, I believe, if I remember correctly, they were telling me about it, um they went out and rated it.
So. Okay.
Individually walked it, so that way they had three independent at separate times go through, and they did their rating system that they had been coming up with at their meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And they rated it, and it's, the, the number is well below what they would pursue.
Mm-hmm. But, oh, my question still stands is, did they ha- has that been covered in a open meeting?
They had their subcommittee meeting, I believe.
What happened, if I can interject.
Okay, I think, yeah.
Please, please.
What happened was they had a, a meeting scheduled and, um, I don't know if it was the chair or somebody came down sick, and so they had to cancel the meeting which is why it didn't get discussed at an actual meeting, and then instead of that, because they weren't gonna meet again for another month, um they decided to go this route and each individual committee member go out and look at it because, you know, they're waiting for a decision um as to what the open space committee was going to do, so um, you know, to move it along a little bit, that was why it was done that way.
Okay.
Okay, uh, can I follow on that now that there's new information?
Go ahead.
That, okay, um Sandy, you were the one that I think said that it's a hundred and twenty days that we have, okay.
Yes.
Um, just wanna make sure that that, that we're not, we don't have to rush necessarily on this. And does anybody know when the last sale date was on that property and what the amount of the sale was?
That, that property's, I, I live right next door to it.
It's been years.
So it's, it's, it was when I moved there sixteen years ago, it was owned, actually over sixteen years ago. Um, it was in a like, um, a trust, and it was like some lawyer guy from towards Boston that owned it, and he passed.
Mm-hmm. Please.
No, oh god, no, no, it's, it's been handed through because it's been in a trust, so he passed, and then it was like in a trust
Okay.
and it's still sat there, hasn't been logged, this is the first time it's been logged in eons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then somehow it got divided into four people, and then they were arguing about it cause we tried to buy a portion of it, not the whole thing, cause I don't want, I didn't, I just wanted a little portion sliver to kinda, anyway, it was a hot mess, you couldn't figure it out from heads or tails. Finally, two of them bought out the other two, so now it's down to two in this trust, and they're actually selling it to my knowledge, but yeah, it's been, cause some of the, the realtors over the years have touched base with me trying to figure it out, and I'm like, look, this is what I know, and it's just a hot mess.
Okay.
So, it's, it hasn't like sold, sold, they've tried, but it, yeah, they.
Okay. Well, according to our assessor's.
Yeah.
Website, it said it was sold on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one.
That's probably the two buying out the other two.
Okay, for forty K. And the other one, this is the one, the thirty-five acre one.
Yeah, cause it's the same people, right?
And I believe they are the same people, yeah.
Yeah, they bought out, they was like, somehow it got into four of them.
And the t- the twelve acre plus or minus.
Yeah.
Same sale date.
Yeah.
And the same price.
Probably, I.
So it was probably the same sale.
Well, one's twelve and one's thirty-five, but.
Yeah, but it's, it's, they was always combined with the same.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I'm not totally sure how they bought it out, but it was very confusing and realtors were trying to figure it out, and it was a mess for a while there for years, so there was a lot of arguing and fighting and, not with me, I'm just like, I don't know nothing.
And, and then.
Stay on my side of the law.
I'm not, I just don't wanna make sure that the facts are out there.
Okay.
And then although these parcels do not directly abut, like other um publicly held property, they are um just one parcel away from some public lands, that's it.
Would you, gentlemen, like to address us about?
Thank you. No, we're just here to see what your decision is on it, so we can move forward or not move forward.
Okay.
So when, when does our hundred and twenty days run out?
It's on the sheet, so January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three is the last day to exercise the option.
But this comes to us already with the recommendation that we do, in fact, waive the.
Mister Chairman, will you entertain a motion?
Sure, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the board of selectmen's right of first refusal under provisions of master and laws, chapter sixty-one, section eight, to purchase parcels of land located on Ragged Hill Road. Map two, parcels thirty-nine forty-one, owned currently by Cara Phil.
Philbin.
Philbin and Paul Scanell.
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, okay, further discussion, any further discussion, questions? Good.
Uh.
Go ahead.
Nah, I'm just gonna shut my mouth.
Oh, okay.
I just, I don't know, I just, I don't know, nothing, I can't do anything about it, no, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion, and the discussion's over, so.
Well, you didn't open up, you looked around the board, remember?
The discussion is here, right, okay, you've had, you had your say, okay, the discussion here is on our motion.
Okay, alright, thank, thank you, Jeff.
So. Okay, um, so seeing no other questions on the part of the board, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, motion is carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had to sit here so long.
Sandy.
No, that's okay.
Yes, I found it.
Yes, so Sandy was able to find it, so there were two applica- once I saw the header, I could search that, I could read your.
Okay. Oh, this, you go sign it.
I can't read that at all, so what are we looking at?
I can't. So there's two applications, so the first one, um, is in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, so five thousand nine ninety-five.
Oh. That's it.
Oh, this is the police?
This is police, this is for a watch guard server for the cruiser, I believe. Storage and management of videos, evidence uploaded from cruiser cameras is what they're looking for.
It was soft.
Five nine ninety-five, was that?
Five thousand nine ninety-five.
Okay, for.
Oh, five thousand nine ninety-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was the first one, and then the second request he has here is in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
That's the radios.
We're gonna leave out the ten cents, cause if, if he had it by any means, he's on his own for the ten cents, let's just face it.
Okay.
And that's for radios, right?
And this is for radios, it says here, um, these are for portable radios, communication between officers and dispatch, um talks about per unit modular communications
Mm.
and so forth.
Yes.
I just thought I'd confuse you all some more and throw those in the mix, that's all.
Yeah.
Do we, uh, know the age of what they're dealing with now for, uh, mobile radios?
I don't see the applications, so I don't.
I wish the chief was here.
Dear ARPA committee members, I'm requesting funds to replace the portable radios that the police officers use to communicate with dispatch. Our current radios are outdated and many of them have issues holding a charge. I've received several complaints from officers that they are having problems sending and receiving communication from dispatch with portable radios that are issued. This is a major officer safety issue as portable radios are a lifeline for officers when they are most vulnerable. Many times when officers leave our department and go to other agencies, they cite officer safety as one reason for leaving. There is also an impact on public safety when officers cannot reach dispatch to request additional resources that they may need at a particular incident. I have spoken with Rec. Director Moriarty, and the radios that have been quoted are what he recommends to replace our current radios. These new radios, in conjunction with the new communications tower that is being built, will go a long way to improve communication, improving officer safety and overall public safety. This will also have a positive impact on officer retention moving forward. That's the best I got.
No, that was perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that just throws a screw in the hole next to.
It certainly does, because portable safety is huge, yeah, but the application didn't go forward.
If I abstained for this, should I sign this?
Is that what we're saying? Then.
I don't know why the application never got received, um, I don't.
I have, I have abstained, I don't know if I'm supposed to sign it, that's the.
Don't leave you off.
I don't know where it fell through the cracks, why we didn't get.
The D two builders. What is it, the D two builders?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there was around the time, I don't know if Ryan had sent it to Ryan, and then Ryan didn't send it in, maybe.
I can't speak to that. And. I don't know.
Were you all signed it?
Yeah, I, I have.
But I had looked, I didn't have anything from Tony, I didn't have it in the hard copies.
Can we place a call to the chief right now to get an answer on why the application didn't show up?
Well, he doesn't, he doesn't know, his impression was that it was submitted.
He thought it had been submitted as well.
By our previous administrator?
Yeah, I abstained.
I guess, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Do you understand?
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't even really matter why we don't have it or what happened, how we didn't get it.
It doesn't.
Problem is, you know, we know the request was there, the question is, as a select board, what do we wanna do about it? Do we wanna say thanks, unfortunately, ARPA committee for one reason or other didn't have the opportunity to look at this? Do we wanna say, hey, you know, we're the final say on this, and, you know, we don't know what ARPA would or wouldn't have done, but, you know, here's the request, and, you know, we'd like to act on them? Do we wanna say, hey, you know, we're the final say on this and you know, we don't know what ARPA would or wouldn't have done, but you know, here's the request and you know, we'd like to act on them? I mean, we have a calculator, we can do math, but.
Yeah, alright.
What do we want? I can do it up for you right now.
Yeah, well, now you're talking significant hits.
Huge hits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus our ten, you know, that we're still trying to agree on, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um and the ten is already take promised, so.
Well, I think we left off and the last part of the conversation before Sandy was looking this up is whether or not we were gonna take the cemetery commission's eighty-five hundred off the list.
And use the fif- and the fifteen hundred from the uh fire, the ambulance.
And the fifteen hundred from the ambulance, which would change the ambulance amount to two forty-five and zero out the cemetery, so.
Two forty-five.
Before we look at any other numbers, is everyone on board with that?
I am, yeah.
I.
I'm, I'm on board.
I'm on board with that.
Yeah, so why don't we do that right now and take care of those two?
Okay, P, are you on board with that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, are you on board with the uh suggestion of the cemetery using the eighty-five hundred and taking fifteen hundred off of the uh?
Well.
Ambulance.
And now that, you know. That ambulance is important, it really shouldn't reduce the amount by anything, to be honest with you, but.
But now we're adding on another thirty thousand here that you're trying to.
Yeah, but it can't come from public safety to 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 support a public safety, do you follow me? Shouldn't take a want to.
Right.
Hmm, so this is gonna be an unpopular decision or thought?
It's gonna be very unpopular, as far as I'm concerned.
But because I have no problem being unpopular. So as I had previously stated at the ARPA committee and have mentioned a little bit here, you know, and was, this was actually brought up to me by another business in town as well. Here for You did receive funding the first round.
Mm-hmm.
So I, they've received funding for lost revenue the first round, it was eighteen thousand, but that's what they, you know.
Sure. It is.
The first round, we didn't actually have an application with a clear amount that they were even requesting, that was the best we could come up with with what we had. I'm okay with reducing the thirty-one thousand four forty-five to just one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Without eh any issues and giving the the thirty thousand for radios in town, I think it's a larger impact.
Mm-hmm.
I think the radios are a safety matter, um I think they're both for safety for our officers as well as our residents in town. Um I think if we had that request before the ARPA committee, I think it's likely that it would have been funded. Um for those purposes, but then again, like I said, I sometimes yield that unpopular opinion, so here I am.
So I have a question if you don't mind.
Uh, de- uh, uh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, Jeff. Um now. I'm pretty sure I read her application, that she did receive PPP.
No, she didn't, she didn't apply for any of those and.
She did. Oh. She did.
She applied for I think one thing, but she never actually followed through with doing it and to get it.
And and but, and in the first round, there was some confusion on the part of the application process, wasn't there for her?
Okay.
Which is why, yeah, she hadn't given enough information, cause she didn't really know what she had to give, isn't that correct, as I recall?
Um as I recall.
Yeah.
What was the other thing that the police department needed?
Uh server for their um video cameras and the cruisers for approximately six thousand dollars.
Okay. So I'm gonna stand by my original suggestion and I'm gonna add. I wanna fund the police radios and the police server. Deduct those five critical things that we wanna fund from the total nut. Then just allocate the remaining money proportionately, percentage-wise, to the remaining private applicants.
So that's another forty-six thousand total, that now we're trying to get by your suggestion, correct? This.
Mm-hmm.
On a how uh whatever formula was you you were suggesting, hitting everybody.
Right.
To cover.
I don't see why any one person with a legitimate application would should be totally decimated.
To cover the. Hmm.
Um.
I'm oh, I'm I'm fine with, I'm just wanna understand.
I mean, how do you decide that, how do you decide? I know there's criteria and Heather just suggested one, but still it it was an application, there was a need, right?
Mm-hmm. So how would this work finan- financially, how does, I'm trying to understand how, cause you said prorated initially in this rec- suggestion.
So you take out the five things we wanna fund, we get a total amount of money left. Then we find out what the remaining applicant's percentage of that total money request would be and we just deduct it.
Well.
By that percentage.
Rounding it off, the total's forty-six thousand.
Well.
That's counting our ten.
Yes, but.
That's true.
He's, what he's saying is to totally fund the two fifty for the ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
Totally fund the thirteen six eleven oh five for the microfiche, so.
For the microfiche, yeah. We already gave ten thousand, that's gone for for the.
Right.
Then we're gonna totally fund the radios.
So what's left?
Wait, you have a.
Then we're gonna totally fund.
You didn't get.
The le- well, let's just work through this math right now, Jeff.
Okay.
Right, so that those five things, right?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the remaining ARPA nut after those five things get funded one hundred percent?
A hundred and nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay, one hundred and nine, one thirty-five.
One thirty-five, well, one thirty-four ninety-five.
Okay.
To be exact.
You said you've already taken care of the ten thousand, I don't know where you've taken the ten thousand.
The that of the number that she's doing that for.
He hasn't.
Okay, um.
It's just the number we've done math with.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
But the parts, you said that the pa- uh open space, we've kind of committed that in a.
Okay. The sixteen.
Application.
Right.
Right, am I wrong?
Correct.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that that was one of them, right?
Okay, so that's one of them.
The three I had were the ambulance, the scanning documents, the town center project and the application, the sixteen.
The open space.
Okay, so now we're down to ninety-three thousand thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
And how many, how many, so you have six items there, what are they?
You have.
Council on the Aging, right?
The council on aging.
No.
No, he's asking what, making sure that you have them on your list right here.
Oh, what I have on my list?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the money, I have.
Yep.
I have two hundred and fifty for the ambulance.
Yep.
I have thirteen six eleven oh five for the laser fiche.
Yep.
I have ten grand that was applied to the T E C bill.
Yep.
Um at town meeting. Um sixteen one is the uh.
Open space?
Open space.
Yep.
And then I had, what was the other one, I have forty-six.
Yeah. These two.
Radios and.
The radios.
The radios.
And the software.
And the software, yes.
And when we back those out for?
Oh, no, so it is one, we have one nineteen left, cause I put that in without thinking.
You have one nineteen, I backed it down to one twenty-nine oh thirty-four.
Yeah, one nineteen.
I love when we all do math, it's great.
Now, isn't it?
We all get a different number.
We're starting with, but you only took out five things.
I took out four things, what's the fifth thing? Town center, ADA open space, laser fiche and ambulance.
Thirty-six thousand.
The radios.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you want me to take that out as well, I'm so sorry.
And the cruiser, yeah.
And then the computer.
Yeah.
Well, then it's less than a hundred thousand.
Yes, ma- no, Sandy Sandy said it was what?
One oh nine, she got one oh nine.
I got one, yeah.
One oh nine thirteen forty-nine or something, thirteen.
Now, if you subtract. I don't think so, but.
Point forty-nine.
Okay, let's try to get the same number.
You know, wouldn't be nice. We'll get there from here.
I know, I know you're all working hard, a heck of a lot harder than me, cause I don't do math, I'm more of a visual person. But once we get a number that.
I'll do it online. If I could, I'll go use my other calculator, it'd be so much easier.
We'll get, we'll get two people with the same number, that'd be awesome.
Yep, we'll start with that.
Ah, there we go.
Thirty-five nine nine five is actually, it's a common.
Nine dollars.
Our ten is forty-six thousand. It's two fifty.
No, uh, here comes some police, nope, never mind, here comes a video.
Okay, ninety-three thousand oh thirty-nine, ninety-five is what I have.
I've got Sandy, maybe he has here a picture. Talk to us about that one.
See what Sandy comes up with.
That's after we take care of, well.
That's after the software, the ambulance, the laser fiche, the ADA, the town center and the radios.
Our deductions, yeah.
What'd you get?
Ninety-three thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for balance.
Nope.
No, what did you get?
One oh three thirty-four ninety-five.
You're missing ten thousand somewhere or somebody.
Well, we did our ten thousand.
Did you, did you take out the ten grand?
I did, yes.
Okay, and you took out.
So why don't you read off what you listed?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have the six grand for the police.
Please.
Yep.
For what?
The cruise, the.
For the monitor, the software.
Okay, the other software, yeah.
Yeah.
Six.
I have the ten grand for T E C bill.
Yeah.
That's engineering, yeah.
Thirty grand for the radios.
Yep.
Sixteen one for the walking trail.
Yeah.
Thirteen six eleven oh five for the scanning.
Yep.
Two fifty for the ambulance.
Thirteen six.
So three twenty-five seven oh six oh five.
I got seven eleven oh five.
So we're five dollar, I think you rounded up five dollars on the uh thing, so we're okay.
So maybe, yeah, you did you put six thousand?
I put, I put exactly what he asked for, five thousand nine ninety-five.
I did, okay, yes, so, yeah, so we had five bucks.
Okay.
Okay, so at least we're at the total there.
Okay, we got, we got a number.
So now what did you subtract it from? I subtracted that from the start out.
Four twenty-eight seven forty-six.
Okay.
Okay, seventy-five.
That's why, alright.
So we have a hundred and three thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
I agree.
Now, right, now can we take that pick in from the list that's on the agenda? Which items have to be hit, cause I'm.
Confused?
According to what Chris is recommending.
I say four through nine, what else, what other choice do you have?
Council on the Aging.
Huh?
Co-.
I, leave it alone.
I would suggest, I would suggest that you just prorate every remaining project.
Prorate on what percent?
It depends on what percent they're requesting of the total new nut.
So whatever we have, so the fifty-one five, whatever that percentage is.
So let's take it, let's take it, let's take an example.
Well, use that, why don't we use that as the example, the the council on the aging, fifty-one five.
So fifty-one five is what percent of four twenty-eight seven forty-six? So four twenty-eight, I mean fifty-one five divided by four twenty-eight seven forty-six is what?
Point one two.
Twelve percent, so now they get twelve percent of one hundred and nine.
That's not much.
One oh nine?
Hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah.
Whatever, you're one oh three, yeah, your number.
Now, ten percent of that is ten.
Twelve thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay.
Thirty-two, forty-two, fifty-two, sixty-two, seventy-two, eighty-two, ninety-two.
That's a big hit too, on that one.
They're all gonna be big hits, you just decimated your total number by.
Yeah, yeah.
By.
You know?
Yep.
By forty-five thousand.
They're all gonna be a big, a big hit.
Claudia put in for sixty thousand, I think.
I know, yes, she did, at the requested right there for sixty, they had a ten thousand, if I remember, buffer.
Yeah, I think so, with the potential changes on things.
But just.
Cause they had some money of their own.
Yeah, just in case, like a, a ten thousand.
So this is taking more than the buffer.
Yeah, they're, they're, the problem is, is if we decimate them all that percentage-wise, for the ones that are actually building things, they're not gonna be able to build them.
What if? We make a recommendation or we actually fund the six items that we've just talked about funding tonight and then we figure out a couple of options for the next meeting for the rest of the funds? And come up with a couple of the alternatives, I think, I think the consensus here, what I'm hearing at the table is that we're all on board to fund the ambulance at two fifty, the laser fiche at thirteen six eleven oh five.
Excuse me.
ADA or the open space that's in for an ADA grant for sixteen one, town center for ten thousand, which we've already done. Um the software needed for the cruisers at five thousand nine ninety-five and the radios for the police at thirty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Seems like everyone seems to be on the page for those. So what if we started with those, got those approved and started the paperwork on that? And then gave some more thought and also, you know, start looking at those other numbers.
So that puts it back into your lap, right?
Well, it doesn't have to, we do not have to send it back to ARPA.
Heather, Heather doesn't want it back in her lap.
Well, what, what, I mean, what do you wanna do? I mean, so you got a hundred and nine left, so. I like your idea.
Cause we know, we know we have consensus right now with all five.
Does everybody agree with Heather's idea? Do we have to make a motion on that?
I, I'd like it.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board approve funding in the following amounts for the following projects, the ambulance are out of ARPA funds. The ambulance for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the laser fiche town hall project for thirteen thousand six hundred eleven dollars and five cents. The open space uh trail improvements project for sixteen thousand one hundred, the town center consultant project for ten thousand dollars. Um the server for the police cruiser for five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and. Communication radios for the police department in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Haven't. Okay, motion is made and second, okay. Any discussion on that motion, any questions? Okay, uh all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Yes.
That's, motion carried. And now.
We need to think about the rest of the area.
We have council on the aging.
Yep.
What do we, what do we need?
Parks Commission, Plainview, Jacomo's here for you.
I don't thi- my personal feeling, I don't think, I think the council on aging, you gotta go a little easy on the old folks, uh and that's how I feel personally.
And the cemetery. Well, we were just talking, the amount Claudia put in for sixty.
Yeah, and it's already done.
Yeah, they had some money, but the margin that she had, uh if she, if we hit her with a twelve percent, it will not be able to build it.
I understand, that's why.
That kills that price, that'll kill it.
Uh, well, you know, pri- projects are gonna get killed, we don't have enough money. I would choose, I would choose.
Well, they've already gotten twenty-five from the s-.
Right.
They haven't gotten it yet, but the state is saying they were going.
And that's just for materials anyway, that's not, there's no labor costs.
That's twenty-five from the state.
And Monty Tech's gonna be doing it.
Correct, it's just materials.
Yep.
And.
Mm-hmm, they've been doing fundraising, um.
So you're saying it's not killed?
I don't, I mean, it, it just might take longer.
Mm-hmm.
To, to have it come to fruition.
Well, we can deal with that later, we're already approved the other one, so unless we're dealing with it now.
No, I'm just wanting pu- put out what still is, has to be considered.
Okay.
So that I'm still on the right pa- page here, council on the aging.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Parks Commission, Plainview, Jacomos here for you, and Cemetery, nothing else, correct? That.
So.
Correct.
It's, there still needs to be figured out.
Two, five through nine. Two.
Parks Commission is not on the table because we funded that, because we, we've already.
There were two projects.
Yeah, well, and the walking track.
The open space.
The well is gonna be taken care of by.
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund.
But there's.
It's the walking track.
There's a walking track at the rec field and then there's the trails at Malone Roads, or, yeah.
That's the one we put in the ADA grant for, the trails.
So, so did I misread it then?
No, no, you're correct.
Nope.
Okay.
No, it's just that there's two.
What am, so what am I missing?
So the ones left on the table are number three, COA fifty-one five for the deck, the Parks Commission for sixteen thousand one hundred for the walking track. So, so the walking track and the trail improvements are different things.
Yeah, and the trail improvements, you put in this, a grant in for that?
There's an ADA grant that we submitted on September thirtieth.
So you poke them to get the sixteen one?
So why did we, yeah, why did we say we didn't want to impact the sixteen one? That's for the, that's for the trail improvement?
Because that would be the match, so right, so for the, yes, so when we submitted the ADA grant, we said we were putting, we thought it would
For the trail improvements.
Go a further way to say, you know, we have money that we've appropriated to port towards this project, we're not just asking the state to give us a blank check.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So included in that Parks Commission request is the Curtis Field walking track in addition to the trails?
Yes, they're separate requests.
Okay.
So left on the table, COA fifty-one five, the Parks Commission sixteen one, Plainview Farm twenty-six four fifty, Jacomos fifteen thousand thirty-nine eighteen, Here For You thirty-one thousand four forty-five, and the Cemetery at eight thousand five hundred.
And we have how much left to play with?
One hundred and.
Three thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Hundred and three.
I'm still not clear on the Parks Commission walking track. Why do you keep saying it's sixteen one? Is the walking track in the commit for the, for the grant sixteen one?
No, what we did, no, what we did for ARPA, if you remember, cause they were both higher amounts.
Looks.
So the Parks Commission had asked for fifty thousand and open space, I think it asked for sixty thousand. And we tried to give them both some of the apple. So that's how we split the apple evenly, the sixteen one was the number, I think Susan was the one who suggested the sixteen one.
Yeah, cause they've, they're gonna try to go for CPA.
Yes, we tried to look at the calculations based on the amount of funds that were theoretically left available and eligible for appropriation from CPA when we did the funding
Two hundred and three three nine ninety-five.
The open or the track would be theoretically a feasible project to do with seed money.
And the suggestion was that we table this?
I mean, unless we're.
I don't see why we table it, it's gotta be resolved at this, at this level anyway.
Well.
And just so you know, the remaining projects that you haven't made a decision on yet come to one hundred forty-nine thousand thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
How much one forty-nine what?
Zero three four point three six.
We're approximately forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars off.
Yep.
So that's basically what we have to cut.
We have to cut.
From these remaining.
Yeah.
Six is forty-five thousand dollars, right?
So my unpopular suggestion could be a possible of reducing Here For You to zero,
Mm-hmm.
reducing Cemetery to zero, that gives you thirty-nine thousand, you're off by about six thousand, at that point you can essentially take a thousand or two thousand from some of the projects, which is still splitting it across the board, but keeping it to the point where projects are still doable.
Mm-hmm.
It's an unpopular.
My suggestion, my unpopular suggestion is what I said previously. Prorate it, what's the number, one? Forty-three? And take the percentage off of each remaining application.
If you.
Which is equivalent to the amount of they are requesting from the total and reduce each of them by that percentage.
If you prorate them though, a bunch of them won't get done.
I was, I was gonna say the same thing.
They won't, then, then that screws everybody down the list. Not everybody.
They're not all, they're not gonna get done anyways. Which project are you gonna save of the remaining five with the money we have?
I don't know, but I'm just, well, no, it's.
Council on Aging, Parks Commission, Plainview, and Jacomos.
Yeah. That's what I mean.
I have a question about Jacomos, if they do a kitchen upgrades, is that their equipment or does that become the building's equipment?
No, it's their equipment, so they can take it with them.
They can?
Yeah.
I mean, they can't even heat the place now, so if, from what I read, they don't have any heat and their landlord won't fix it.
He's, yeah.
That's.
Yeah, but that's not, that's their problem, because that's, that's against the law when you're a renter, I think.
Not when you're a commercial.
Not when you're a commercial, okay, just for residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it depends on how the lease is right.
And he refuses to do anything.
Alright, well, I wouldn't stop paying rent, but that's me, anyways. It's, it's a hard decision, I mean.
Yeah, I believe what, they're looking for convection ovens.
You know what? So.
Yeah.
Um.
So this is just capital and PPP didn't cover capital, did it? It was just a lot, keeping your business going, overhead and wages. That's what PPP was for, overhead and wages.
Uh, personal protection, like if you needed safety and stuff like, it was.
Okay, so, but they had a chance, I mean, the only one I see here that could have put in for that was Here For You, obviously, the last revenue.
I believe Jacomos put in for pretty much everything they could get and they did get what they could for the different fundings.
But Here For You did not, or she didn't?
I think my recollection was that she said she put in for some things, but then realized she didn't put in for other things, and then something she may not known about, but.
Alright. Alright, I just needed to get my mind straight on what, what's doing.
Well, we'd, if we are gonna try to solve this tonight, we need to get a consensus pre- pretty, because we still have, uh.
Only ways to go.
Well, you have.
And we've also got an executive session and a lawyer reading that, that we need to be able to get to.
Yeah, well.
We currently have, I think, two proposals, two different proposals on the table. Right, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we need to somehow.
So where's everyone else called? Do you guys have different suggestions? Do you have a let's wait and figure this out next time suggestion? Do you?
I don't like cutting everybody, cause I think that it will cause a lot of these to not happen.
Mm-hmm.
I really don't wanna.
What do you, you, can you explain that to me? What do you mean?
If you, if you cut the percentage wise, the dollar amounts down, then that will, I fear that it'll make these projects unattainable for these businesses to do.
Well, then they, then they, you cut it to zero, then, you gotta cut.
That's what I mean, it's, it's either.
Yeah. Zero or all.
Or, yeah, and that's what I mean, it's.
All or nothing. All or nothing.
Like the council on aging, it will come to a point where it becomes undoable.
I don't even, me personally, I don't even wanna touch council on aging, I really don't.
But it's no different than with like the, you know, uh, Plainview or Jacomos with some of these, cause that's a big chunk of change they're asking for, for upgrades. It will be.
To a sound building, ca- to.
To their businesses.
To here, or you kind of?
No, I mean, it, Jacomos or Plainview, that's a, that's a big chunk of change, if we start cutting the percentages, present- percentages enough, it will make it unobtainable for them to necessarily do it.
So why fund it at all?
That's, that's what I'm sa- it's, if you start cutting it too much.
Take it from all of them, I mean.
You know. I don't know. You talk about the deck here, it's the absolute worst time.
It's not just a deck.
To be trying to build the deck.
It's an enclosed building.
I understand what it is, thank you, thank you. But it's, my point is, the absolute worst time to be buying lumber, sourcing construction projects, things are high, they're paying way more than they would've paid two or three years ago and probably way more than they're gonna have to pay in two years. So if that thing got put on hold, I don't think it would be the worst thing in the world.
But she's, this has actually been proposed for well over a year, because Ryan, Ryan had to put it off.
Sorry, I can't predict what would've happened. I couldn't predict what would've happened.
And they, and they've been raising their, the money themselves too.
Yeah.
And what about the money that's taken from them?
Heather, the walking track.
And they have Monty Tech in line.
I don't wanna take money from the town, don't get me wrong, but the walking track.
Take it all.
I believe the meeting I sat in on, it's gonna cost an awful lot more than that.
I don't know, but I mean, you have to remember, you're gonna have to go through.
If they're gonna pave it.
You're gonna have to go through thirty, thirty-nine M, right, so you're gonna have to go to procurement, so I don't know if their current guesses are prevailing. The other option is I don't know if it would be excessively more to cost, but because it's paved, like, when you say a walking track, I think of like that nice track bouncy thing.
Yeah.
You have around the high school, not the paved sidewalk that's.
With the, the three.
Yeah.
Round.
Yeah.
A little bit wider, I mean, maybe they're eligible for a grant, maybe they can look at, you know, doing it in sections. I don't know. But again, I think one of the reasons we were, the consensus was so supportive, one of the things we were looking at with the ARPA funding is how many people do each of these projects reach?
Hmm.
Right, so the parks, we said, listen, this is gonna likely reach everyone in town.
That's very true.
Mm-hmm.
It's also one of the reasons that we said if anyone has to go to CPC for funds, we thought it would be more likely that the walking track would get support over the trails, right, because more people use the walking track.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Not to say that the trails isn't a great use, but people may not recognize the significance or the importance of supporting that project.
Right.
So we wanted to provide, you know, a source of funding that you're not gonna find elsewhere. That was one of the reasons we did that. The COA, they had, this is the second round, they've submitted the application. They did the first time, we said, hey, you know, you're missing A B C, we don't have a plan, we don't have an image, we don't have what have you. They came back with it, they put time in, we have state funding supporting it, so I'm on par with Peter's thought on that, that I think this is a really important project and we should support it. Um, Plainview Farm, Jacomos, they're both businesses in town that have a, you know, decent following and so forth. Um, we wanna support them, Here For You, I'd say the same, but again, we did support it the first round, so it's not that we've left any of these businesses out.
Right.
And then the Cemetery, to Katie's point, as well as it, as much as it is nice to have things look pretty and so forth, you know, just like we did with our budget, we cut things because the people part was more important, so what's the biggest impact here? I see the biggest impacts are the COA, um, the Parks Commission for the walking track, and then the two businesses that we haven't hit yet.
Why are you counting the COA as one of the biggest impacts? How many people use the senior center on a given day?
You'd be surprised.
I, I don't know, I'm asking, tell me the number.
There's, I can't give you a guaranteed number, but.
Fifty?
Thirty-five to fifty.
Okay, thirty-five to fifty, how many people use the walking track every single day? I mean, if you want, I, I, I mean, if you wanna consider.
Twenty, thirty?
You know, the most impact to the most people, I don't think the deck out back is gonna really impact more than fifty people.
Well, the use of the deck was supposedly for also for storage, giving them more space that they need.
Storage space, that impacts nobody.
Well, not, not storage, it's, it's, um, for them to be able to be outside and have more.
Yeah.
Outside and for handicaps that have trouble, uh, they're gonna do a whole new handicap weekend and everything else to come into the building,
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, to give them better access.
Which is nee- which is needed, yeah.
Very much so.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it's, I don't know.
Cause like when they do their events, it is like when they have their, you know, their cards, their pitch, their bingo, um, their Thanksgiving dinner, their, uh, uh, picnic in, at Flo's house over in the garden and stuff like that, it's a lot of.
Yep.
Seniors over there, the place is packed, I know, cause my kids are usually volunteering to, to serve and this, that, and the other. Um, it is very well attended for, you know, a senior center, cause it is small, it's, we don't have a big senior center.
Mister Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
I'll certainly entertain a motion, we can see where it goes.
I'd like to make a motion that we support the COA, um, deck project with ARPA funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty, okay, a motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second. Discussion. Are you okay with that?
I, I got no discussion for it, so, yeah.
Well, I know you, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, then we'll take a vote, uh. Again, the motion is for the council on the aging for fifty, rounding off at fifty thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Are we voting?
Do you wanna?
Yeah, no, I'm trying to think how I'm gonna vote on this.
Oh, well, yeah, we gotta put it up for vote first.
Right. Okay.
I'd rather bite my tongue off.
All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I.
Okay, let, if I could back that down a little bit, let's just go by voice so I can.
Oh, sorry.
Who said yes?
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Two.
Heather.
Three, okay, three, four, uh, opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion, motion is carried.
Okay, so take fifty off of that.
Right, now we're down.
Not fifty?
Fifty off the.
Yeah, fifty off the, off the one oh three, total.
Oh, that total, I was, I thought you were saying, take fifty away from the seniors.
Yep. No, 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 so that one's done.
So fifty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. This is painful.
Yes, this is very painful.
This is like cutting our budget again.
Yeah, it hurts.
It hurts everybody.
It does.
You're gonna have to get used to it, I guess.
It's gonna hurt a lot of time.
This for the next year and a half, I'm like.
I still, I, I, I hate to.
So what's left now?
For projects, Parks Commission sixteen thousand one, Plainview Farm twenty-six four fifty, Jacomos fifteen oh thirty-nine eighteen, Here For You thirty-one four forty-five oh eight, and Cemetery eight thousand five hundred.
And what do we look for?
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three one.
Well, we have fifteen three, fifty-three thousand thirty-nine and nine cents. We only saved fifteen hundred.
To spend.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
But you got the fifty past.
Yeah, I propose that we do my same mathematical equation with the remaining applicants on the list.
Is that your motion?
So what was the amount left, I'm sorry, again?
Up.
A prorated mathematical equation.
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three?
Thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Fifty-three.
For the remaining five, right?
Yes, so Mister Chairman, I think KP is trying to make a motion.
A twelve. Oh, he said propose. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ahead.
That we fund the remaining applicants a prorated amount based on the total remaining amount of funds we have and the percentage of that amount, their application is four.
I think, I think the percentage should be included in the motion.
Well, we'd have to do them all mathematically, but.
They're all separately, yeah.
They're all different numbers.
Can we bang them out now then?
Sure.
And you're going to put the cemetery in there as well?
Well, if, if there's a second on the motion, then let, then let's bang it out in the discussion, is there a second on the motion?
What on the cemetery, I thought we already got rid of the cemetery.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Still, okay, so even if we took out the Here For You and the Cemetery, we'd still have to come up with thirteen thousand.
Cool.
We have a motion on the floor, folks, is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
Okay, is a second, now we, let's do all the discussion about it, so. And then we've got to get moving. So who's working on the percentages?
Sandy.
Okay.
All of us.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not.
Hey, let me make this proposition, you should be working on it.
I'd probably come up with the third different number.
Yeah.
His idea, he should. So it's, was fifty-three, fifty-three thousand. And you go by, let's say for Parks, let's say Plainview twenty-six four fifty, off of the original amount of four twenty-eight, is that how it's done?
Well, the fifty, are we taking the percentage of the fifty-three? So like when you're looking at twenty-six thousand, that's more than fifty percent, right?
Right. Yes.
So, so we're looking at a fifty percent cut there?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
For example, the Cemetery, we get one thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
Why bother?
Then why bother, why give a man?
Why bother, that's why I'm saying.
You've just ended it.
Yeah.
Just keep, get rid of the cemetery.
They can't do it, they can't do anything.
Well, let's hear the numbers.
That was one.
Well, Plainview is gonna come down to thr- around thirteen thousand dollars.
It's thirteen more than they had.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, exactly.
Sixteen is roughly thirty percent. It's forty-eight thousand, so it's thirty, so thirty percent, a third more off of that, another five thousand there.
But the Cemetery and Parks are gonna have to find it somehow through the town, Parks can go after CPA.
Correct.
C. The Cemetery, for those two Cemeteries can't, they have to go after capital improvement.
Yeah.
Which in other words will set it sitting in limbo for a long period of time.
Have they gone after an, an capital improvement before, so this is their first time?
No, no, that, that was, that was part of the thing at their meeting, if I remember correctly, was, um, Susan urging them to go.
Okay. Capital.
To capital.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Um.
Thirty-one thousand.
That's why it's like, I hate to keep harping on that, but it's just, it's like, it's the low hanging fruit.
Sixty percent, just a little bit. So sixty percent of that. Six, eighteen, that's.
Well, what about, I mean, is the walking track still on there?
So, I'm figuring for Here For You, that would be sixty percent roughly, roughly eighteen thousand off of that.
The walking track is still on there.
Why can't they go for that too, the CPC?
That's they, they can go for the CPCs.
These are huge hits.
They are.
Have they, have they?
These are huge hits.
Not yet.
Well, you just decimated the total nut by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty, fifty.
Four hundred thousand dollars, right now.
Right, what?
Well.
Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Well, what really threw it off was not having those radios and the cruisers to go through you guys to begin with, you know what I mean? Unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that hurt.
They got special treatment.
It all hurts.
Cause we just took it tonight, but.
Yeah.
But it's public sa- public safety.
It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not special treatment, it's something that.
It's public safety, we have to, it has to become a priority.
It's public safety, it impacts the most people, we gotta look for the projects that impact.
That's a number one priority.
The most people, no, I agree with that, Chris.
The most people, that impacts every resident of public.
Are you trying to do the math too, like for each one?
I, I was, I figured I'd come up with different numbers than Sandy and, you know.
Yeah, we'll have fun and see what we get, right?
It'd be great. Maybe they'll, we'll luck out and they'll come up with the same number the first time.
Oh, you're a joke.
I'll bet you soda they don't.
Well.
Who's got a soda, cause I'm just gonna give it to you now.
If we can't do this in another ten minutes, then maybe we should put it on another meeting.
Why, you don't wanna stay here all night, Jeff? This is super fun. I love spending my Monday nights here with you all.
No. No, we're gonna be here. We have a lengthy executive session ahead of us.
I know, we're all gonna be.
That's alright, I mean, you in a rush to go home?
Best buddies.
Huh?
I'll stay here, that's why we get paid the big money.
No, we have. Yeah, right, but, there's, there is a lawyer, there is a lawyer who gets paid, who has been waiting all night for us.
Well, we also.
Oh, she's not charged, she's on call, don't you worry.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Okay, what you got?
We signed up for that.
Alright.
Let's hear it.
So, I have.
Everybody's always up when she says it.
That Here For You would get eighteen thousand six forty-two forty-two.
Okay.
Jacomos would get four thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay.
Four thousand two hundred sixty-four twenty-eight.
Plainview Farm would get thirteen thousand one ninety eleven.
Okay.
And, this one I didn't.
Parks Commission, Jeff, let me talk.
Would get four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and six cents.
As opposed to sixteen thousand.
Actually, get rid of the one hundred percent.
And the Cemetery would get basically nothing.
That, that, I didn't, well.
Even bother.
Yeah.
It would get thir- one. It would get thir- one thousand, three sixty-two, eighteen.
Get rid of.
So basically, yeah, Parks and, Parks and Cemetery are like.
Money close.
Huh? So, I get your logic, eh, but I don't think
I have a bid in.
Totally.
The five thousand's gonna help the Parks, I don't think thirteen hundred's gonna help Cemetery.
Correct.
Cemetery, I agree.
Um.
So with, so we still have a motion and a second on the floor, Mister Chairman?
Yes, anyway, we're still discussing, so, yep.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what happened, you didn't consider those in your calculations then?
Yeah, I did. Oh, I did.
She wrote, she did.
So what's the total amount of your awards, man?
Hopefully the, um, total. Two, six, four, two, two. And three, six, two, eight. I'm only at thirty-eight, five, why is that?
You're off by a little bit.
Yeah. I am.
Thirty-eight, five, you're off by like nine hundred bucks.
No, we should be up to fifty-three.
I thought we had fifty-three thousand to put.
No.
No, you're at thirty-nine, that we have to cut.
I thought it was fifty-three, from the beginning.
So didn't I?
That's what I was, that's what she said, fifty-three thousand.
Oh, no, that was my number if I took out the, the Parks and the, the Here4U, sorry. I got different numbers over here, don't listen to me.
You're missing.
I'm not adding anything.
Well, before we vote on this, we better come up with
The correct numbers.
The right number that we are voting on, okay?
How about if I amend my motion to table it until the next meeting, so we can all go back and take the time and not under pressure and figure out the remaining amount after we funded what we just voted on funding and prorate that amount across the remaining applicants.
And maybe somebody will have a magic wand to fix this all, or come up with a Plan B.
Can't we, who do that is?
Oh, do we have an exact amount that we are trying to?
Weeks.
We can't come up with the, I don't think we have.
No, I meant in terms of the, eh, we're starting with that eh, to get the percentage.
Fifty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, is the balance.
And that's, and that's what the p- That'll be the base, that'll determine the percentage for each one of these, right?
Is the, is remaining balance in any kind.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that we can agree on that, and then get, get the math done and present it at the next meeting.
So. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
So one, two, and three have been
I would be in favor of that.
Uh, fifty thousand for council on each.
So can you just say that number one more time?
Fifty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
And what are the remaining projects we're talking about?
The
Five through nine.
Yep, five through nine.
One, two, three, four, five, Cemetery Commission.
Here4U, Jacamos, Plainview.
If you look on this, your agenda, Chris, it's numbers five, six, seven, eight, and nine on your agenda. Yeah, there you go.
So it's five.
Yep, five through nine.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
Yep.
I know, you get different numbers every time.
Right, so I think we should just step back.
Alright.
So was I, so did you amend your motion?
I did amend my motion.
So, and who seconded, who seconded the amendment?
Yeah, we're gonna step back.
I, I'll still second it.
We're gonna do the math.
Will you go along with the event?
Wouldn't go home, we're gonna take our homework, come up with the numbers, bring this up at the next meeting
Okay. For the next meeting.
And so what we wanna do with these remaining applicants.
Okay, I know, uh, are you, is?
I will resecond that.
No, no, is this on, is ARPA on a deadline now? Because our next meeting is not until November.
We don't, you don't need our, but, eh, at this point, you mean with the money? No.
Yeah, we have to spend it.
Yeah.
But I think the only thing to keep in mind is, you know, some of these businesses might be chomping at the bit a little bit on their projects.
Yeah.
But I think we, you know, we approved the town thing, so as far as those go, I think they're okay.
Mm-hmm.
So they can wait until November seventh, right?
Yeah, we have like, what, two years to spend it or something like that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then the motion is made and amended, uh, are everybody clear on what now voting on?
We're tabling this.
We're tabling this to the next meeting where the figures will be presented at that time.
Five, six, seven.
Yes.
Tabling five through nine, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Using the number fifty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and how many pennies?
Ninety-five cents.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five cents.
Yep.
Okay. No further discussion, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, posed. Thank you, okay.
That was fun.
It was painful.
Yeah.
Were you kidding?
All five, that was sarcasm, Sandy.
Alright, uh, next item then would be the TA report, Sandy?
No report.
Good, okay. On the policies to review, we do have one, the electronic sign policy.
Yes.
Have y'all had a chance to look at, was in a, on that? So we'll throw that, we can either give it to Katie or Sandy both to talk about it, or if you, anybody have any questions? I've, I've looked at it and it seems fine, Danny.
Yeah, Tony and I went through a few different towns in the area pulling theirs and looking at, um, what they had. Um, and we tried to make it as easily to follow as humanly possible and as, as very easy form, which didn't make it in there, but there's a form I can.
It's in there, it was the first stage, the application, yeah.
Oh, the form was in there, okay, yes. So, yeah, the form's in there and basically, um, we did in order of what's it prioritized, so that way, because I'm getting a lot of requests to put things on and there's only so much time you could have on there and so many things you can show on there without it all, it just becomes a hot mess and you can't, you, you can't read it, cause there's too many things on there, you'll never see it all, so we have to prioritize what's.
Who makes the decision of what goes on the sign?
The TA, yeah, this form goes to TA, they have to follow this
TA. Rule.
Rules.
Yep.
And then, um, once the TA approves it, it either gets handed to myself or Tony to actually physically make it fit, and sometimes we have to go back. I'm so far the only one that's putting stuff on there, not that Tony has, like, we just haven't sat down, I haven't been able to show her. Um, she's, she's helped with a few things, but a lot of times I have to go drive there and physically look at it, because the way it looks on the screen is totally different.
The colors are different, right?
The colors are different, the font, like, it bleeds into, you can't read it, it's kinda off skewed, you know, it's,
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's, we're trying to, you know, get it to, so you have to like physically go drive there.
Yeah.
And because there's awesome cell service, I can't fix it right there on spot. I have to go back to somewhere where there's so, either cell service or wifi to go fix it and then do this all over again.
You need hotspot.
I just, seriously, so, um, but yeah, so we came up with a policy because like I've been asked four or five times for things that either had to wait or stuff that wouldn't be deemed appropriate to be put on there, and it's, there needs to be a policy put in place so it, we can follow the guidelines therefore, it's equal to everyone and everybody understands the policy. And there's a form, so that way they can, cause sometimes people tell me different things, what they want on there, it's like, well, this one told me this, you're telling me this, what do you actually want on there? So to make it equal for all involved, and even for my own stuff, I have to, I have to fill out that form and hand it to the TA and wait patiently
Yeah. Yeah.
For them to turn around and I can put, you know, my event on there, so in other words, it, it all has to go through the same.
What's the order of priority? Cause it talks about order of priority, I see definitions, but I don't see a section maybe missing it.
It's.
Priorities for, yeah.
Right there, there was, at one point, there was a page missing, now you got the one that the page was missing.
Oh, I don't have that page.
Yes, I had her take it through, take it out, yes.
Maybe I see the page.
Here's your priorities.
Yeah, I'm like, there's a page missing, it didn't go up there.
Emergency first, town information business second.
Yeah.
Uh, official school information business third. Which that's not defined, is that, is that not the same thing as town information business?
What, I'm sorry.
Town information slash business, and C is official school information slash business. Oh, you're saying school comes after town?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if the school part is in the definitions, or at least on the policy sheet I have. Um, town affiliated nonprofits, announcements of veterans returning.
No, that one was taken off because it comes to a slippery slope.
The veterans?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he has the old one, there's also own.
Why don't even have the old ones?
Yeah, that, that is the old one. So, um, and there's going to be, uh, six messages we figured we can allow on there at a time max. They're five seconds each. Um, and even that's a stretch, so I'd rather, like, you can see right now a few of them, there's like two combined because there's too many right now.
Mm-hmm, I think most towns have gone with four.
Yeah. This way, there's a pretty good long stretch, and because there's businesses that you're stopped at right there in the center of the bank, you have the gas station, people will be standing there
Hmm.
and, you know, like, you'll be in a parking lot, you can, you can see them a lot more readily. Um, they can flip through, so that's why I figured six would be max driving. You won't be able to read them all, but.
You gotta pull over.
Yeah, but at least we could get most, there's gonna be some months that there's probably gonna be like two, three at a time.
Okay.
That's, the, October is very busy, and I've had things that have had to wait, like Sandy's taxes aren't on there yet. Um, they will be going on, yes, they're scheduled to go on.
Really?
Yeah.
But I thought that was town business.
Ah, because it's not till November first, I'm trying to take things in priority, I'm trying to take things.
That is, but, but town's priority.
Yes, but it, because of the date, so it kinda like bumps it a little bit.
Right, that's.
You know what I mean? It's like one of those.
Yeah.
And I just pout.
She does.
All you can do.
But hers is gonna go on, I think it's scheduled for what? What did I tell you, the twenty-second?
Your time is short.
I think it's scheduled for, so when the, when the, the library falls off,
Yeah, I think that's what you said, it'll still be at least a week.
it will go on, so it will be more than a week, you know, it has to be on there, so it's, it's wrestling priority to town versus fundraiser versus the, you know, it's, it's gonna be a struggle forever, you know, that's the part, you know, part of the course, that whoever has one of these, you gotta, yeah.
Hmm. Under, um, section, uh, on this, so five B, I don't know if that's still the same, number of days messages will run. Is it seven or fourteen days prior to an event?
What does it say?
Seven, two, fourteen days.
Yeah, seven to fourteen for, we're trying to give it a, depend, cause it depends on if there's stuff on there, we're gonna have to, some of this stuff, we're gonna have to play it by ear.
Okay.
So if there's room, we can add it earlier.
Okay.
If there's not room, you know, so, it's one of those, we're trying not to flood with too much.
The minimum of seven and the maximum of fourteen.
Yeah, we're, we, we're trying to get things up there in a good amount of time, so that way they can be viewed. But sometimes there's, like, this month, October is super crazy.
So what if you're running the thing and now something urgent where the town comes up?
Then that just.
Who do you delete?
Everybody.
So the top one.
If, like, say, say there's a tornado coming or something, you know, like a
Well, right, yeah, but.
That deletes all.
Okay.
We just go to one. If there's like something traumatic like that.
Okay.
That will just trump everything.
Okay.
And it'll go to one stagnant sign.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. I think that's where it's at.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Mister Chairman, will you accept a motion?
Yes, I will.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the electronic signage policy as written.
To approve and to accept, correct, either way?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, motion is made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Motion carried. Alright. Um, moving to number nine, what we have to do here uh, is to, uh, approve, and, and first of all, we gotta have to o- open the state election warrant to approve it, and we all have to sign five copies, and then we have to move to accept the state election warrant.
Correct.
So that's, uh, what we need to do here, so.
I think you just have to accept it.
Yeah, we don't have to open it.
Uh, oh, okay, alright, so then, can we?
No, so we just, we just need a motion, I'll make a motion to accept November eighth, twenty-twenty-two state election warrant.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Yes.
See, we, we all already signed it, correct?
No.
No, that was.
That was the town meeting warrant.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
And there are five copies that we have to sign, so.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes? Opposed, abstained, okay, so.
Do we wanna sign that afterwards and keep going with the agenda, Mister Chairman? She's not gonna let leave without signing it.
You've got that right.
Okay, well, that's basically it.
That, yeah.
That's it. Uh, public press questions, none, okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Now, before we get this executive session, uh.
I'm here.
Are we going to have to come out of exec- executive session this time to simply so that we can adjourn, or can we adjourn from open session now, moving into executive session, and when we come out, do not
I think.
No intention of getting back into the open session.
I think legal's preference is usually to come back into open session only for the purposes of adjournment, but I'm happy to make a motion, Mister Chairman, if you'll entertain one.
Alright. Yes, and.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for the following reasons, only to return for the purposes of adjournment in open session. Um, going to executive session under Masterful Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, for the purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation sessions with non-union personnel and to conduct contracts negotiation with non-union personnel. The board will need to strategize and to negotiate a contract with the new town administrator. Um, exactly, also executive session thirty A, Section twenty-one A one, to discuss deliberation, take action appropriate in response to an open meeting law complaint against the select board received from Jill Mann, ten, five, twenty-twenty-two, and ten, fourteen, twenty-twenty-two. And to revise executive session minutes from eight, fifteen, twenty-twenty-two, in compliance with the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Determination dated ten, fourteen, twenty-twenty-two. And lastly, to approve and release executive session minutes from October third, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Motion is made in favor of second?
Second.
Okay, uh.
Carolyn is joining us.
This, huh, yeah.
I mean, I, I gotta, Chairman, I need to use the restroom.
Okay.
I'm gonna excuse myself.
Um, it's a, it's a voice, uh, hold here, and it's, uh, to, uh, to do that.
I'll be right back.
And Carol's only joining us for the second one.
No, both.
Oh, really? Okay, alright, alright. Um, so we'll have to wait for him.
Yeah.
I think we can do it with the other four of us, cause we have an adjournment.
Alright, actually. Yeah, okay, the motion to, as read, so, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, so now we need to wait.